Eternal God, we bless your holy name. We thank you, God, for this day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for this opportunity to just be in this place today. We bless you, God, for this council, for the administration, for the entire Charleston County government. And we thank you, God, for the work that each of these individuals do every day. We pause and say a special prayer for the Coates family. And we ask, Heavenly Father, that you continue to just give them the comfort that they need during this hour. We lift up the legacy of Joe Coates. And we thank you, God, for the light that he shined brightly as he lived unabashedly and just continued to enable the love that emanates from him through you, from you through him, to be extended to us. And we ask, God, that you continue to bless those who are first responders. And we, not for a long prayer, but we just ask that you continue to move this county forward. And we'll give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Moody, would you raise your pledge?
I pledge to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that very timely prayer of Reverend Milton.
Amen.
I would like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Coates and his family. Thank you very much. Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings was posted and agendas were distributed to news media's in-person requesting notification.
Minutes of May 16th.
Move.
Seconded by Mr. Boykin. Any additions, deletions? These are for the minutes of May 16th and May 21st, 2024.
Congregation to the clerk and her staff.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Recognized? Yes, sir.
Move to approve 3A and 3B?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve 3A and 3B. The first one is the 80th. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. First one is the 80th anniversary of D-Day. Mr. Kowalski.
It's a great honor to read this on our 80th anniversary, which will take place on June 6th, two days from now. "The Resolution of Charleston County Council Commemorating the 80th Anniversary of D-Day. Whereas on June 6, 1944, D-Day, more than 100,000 American and Allied troops stormed the beaches of Normandy, France, and thousands more parachuted in behind enemy lines on a mission to retake Europe from the control of Nazi Germany. And whereas, on the night before the attack, General Dwight D. Eisenhower issued a message to the Allied forces stating, 'The eyes of the world are upon you. The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere march with you. We will accept nothing less than full victory.' And whereas, the troops were met with a shoreline littered with obstacles, including landmines, bunkers, and strategically positioned machine gun nests, which resulted in heavy casualties of over 9,000 Allied soldiers killed or wounded on that day. And whereas, through their gallant efforts and dedication to duty, the forces ultimately overwhelmed the enemy and secured the beachhead, which allowed wave after wave of infantry to push onto the continent, resulting in liberation, forces fighting to end the tyrannical of Hitler and the atrocities of the Holocaust. Now therefore be it resolved, Charleston County Council does hereby commemorate the 80th anniversary of D-Day in remembrance and honor of all those brave soldiers, sailors, and airmen, whose selfless sacrifices catalyzed the deliverance of oppressed people and secured freedom for decades to come. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman, June 4, 2024." I just wanted to, you know, mention briefly, as we are now seeing the passing of most WWII veterans, including my father, the greatest generation, I believe, this country ever had. And we owe them our undying gratitude for the world we live in today and free, and we defreed it, the greatest evil that this world has ever known. And in preparation for this, just in a time when, I just wanted to play, it's only a minute, the speech that Eisenhower gave. It's very telling that ones have leaders like that, who spoke with such elegance and passion, and it's only a two-minute speech. And I think it's worth hearing.
Soldiers, sailors, and airmen of the Allied Expeditionary Force, you are about to embark upon the great crusade toward which we have striven these many months. The eyes of the world are upon you. The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere march with you. In company with our brave allies and brothers in arms on other fronts, you will bring about the destruction of the German war machine, the elimination of Nazi tyranny over the oppressed peoples of Europe, and security for ourselves in a free world. Your task will not be an easy one. Your enemy is well-trained, well-equipped, and battle-hardened. He will fight savages. But this is the year 1944. Much has happened since the Nazi triumphs of 1940, 41. The United Nations have inflicted upon the Germans great defeat in open battles, man-to-man. Our air offensive has seriously reduced their strength in the air and their capacity to wage war on the ground. Our home front has given us an overwhelming superiority in weapons and munitions of war, and placed at our disposal great reserves of trained fighting men. The tide has turned. The free men of the world are marching together to victory. I have some confidence in your courage, devotion to duty, and scale in balance. We will accept nothing less than full victory. Good luck, and let us all be thanks to the blessing of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking.
And I would just say, I hope and pray we at some time in the future have leaders like that in control of our government. And remember that President Eisenhower, the night before, prepared a speech, and he accepted, he had a speech accepting victory and what it meant, but also what it meant if we were defeated. And he said, he took the blame in himself. He said, "If any blame or fault attaches in the attempt at his mind alone." And I hope that we once again have leaders like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a resolution honoring Dr. Mary Thornley.
A resolution of Charleston County Council honoring Dr. Mary Thornley on the occasion.
Dr. Thornley? Anyway, County Council, join me down, sit down with Dr. Thornley.
Honoring Dr. Mary Thornley on the occasion of her retirement as president of Trident Technical College. Whereas, the members of Charleston County Council have learned that Dr. Mary Thornley will begin a well-deserved retirement after a half a century as a premier educator at Trident Technical College, the last 33 years of which have been distinguished and highly-regarded president. And whereas, as the college's fifth and longest-serving president, Dr. Mary Thornley began her 50-year career with Trident Technical College as the adjunct instructor in 1973, and later became a full-time instructor the following year. She became a department head, dean, and vice president during her years with the college before being named president in 1991. Whereas, through Dr. Mary Thornley's visionary leadership as president, enrollment at Trident Technical College has grown from 7,997 in the fall of 1991 to more than 14,000 in the fall of 2023, and it has been the largest technical college in South Carolina since 2010. And whereas, in 1991, the college included three campuses, and under the leadership of Dr. Mary Thornley, it has grown to five campuses and two training sites. Through her unwavering commitment to meet the ever-evolving needs of the region, Dr. Mary Thornley has tirelessly fulfilled the college's mission to educate the individual, accelerate the economy, and inspire the future. And whereas, Dr. Mary Thornley's boundless ambition for the college has been an integral factor of the Low Country's continued growth and economic success. Trident Tech helps to serve the demands of the community's workforce through a host of courses, including business, hospitality, manufacturing, nursing, radio, and television broadcasting, among many others. And whereas, Dr. Mary Thornley's success has been recognized by many rewards and honors over the years with significant commendations, such as the Order of the Palmetto, the Joseph P. Riley Leadership Award, the Shirley B. Gordon Pi Theta Kappa Presidential Award of Distinction, and the South Carolina's Association Technical College Commissioner/CEO Award. She received the Association of Community Colleges Trustee CEO Award twice, in 2009 and 2019. And whereas, in 2018, the Trident Tech's Area Commission voted to rename the college's main campus in Norcholson, the original and largest campus, the Thornley Campus, in honor of Dr. Mary Thornley for her years of service and leadership. And whereas, grateful for her many years of distinguished service to the Trident Technical College, Charleston County Council takes great pleasure in extending best wishes to Dr. Mary Thornley as she transitions to a richly deserved retirement at an unhurried pace for the days ahead. The members wish her many years of enjoyment as she begins her well-earned retirement on June 1, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved, and duly, meeting duly assembled, that Charleston County Council does hereby recognize and honor Dr. Mary Thornley, the transformative president of Trident Technical College, upon the occasion of her retirement after 50 years of outstanding service, and wish her continued success and happiness in all her future endeavors. Charleston County Council, Herbert R. Sasse III, Chairman, June 4, 2024.
I'd like to say something. May I try to use a mic?
Yes.
Mike. Stand right there.
There's my great.
Stand right there. Right over there.
There you go.
That's Mike.
I'm deeply grateful for the resolution, but I was driving over here and thinking it should be reversed. We are the third-largest college providing undergraduate education behind USC and Clemson. And over the years, as we have grown, we have had to address additional buildings, additional parking, additional land, additional, you name it. Charleston County has always responded, always. Charleston County is thriving, ladies and gentlemen, we all know that. And Trident Tech is thriving. And one of the reasons we are thriving is because we have locked hand and glove with Charleston County. Kyle and your mother worked with me for 40 years, you know that. Henry, we're at your school all the time, working together. Let me see. Erg, your daughter graduated from our nursing program. I could go down the line and tell you things about these. You averaged on campus about once a week, didn't you?
Yes, yes.
I am deeply, deeply grateful, deeply grateful. Can we get a picture, all of us, close together? Real close. Yes, real close. Yeah. Welcome.
Always the priest. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
He's averaging, it's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, not that much I can tell you. Jesus. Thank you all. We are going to disband County Council in order to hold public comments.
All right. The first person signed up is Anthony Bryant, followed by George Freeman, and then Susan Kershaw.
I hate to be the bearer of concern. As a city council meeting, and the hate crime ordinances have been put in place, and I guess my speech has been qualified in some kind of indirect way. And so I want to talk about agency of law enforcement, local, county, state, and federal law enforcement. Members of the Commission on Law Enforcement Agency, Inc., public comment 2016, 2017, not received the transcript or video yet. Charleston County Police Department, Charleston County Sheriff's Office, you concerned about equal protection and due process, was administered enforced program activities, innocent until proven guilty, tell reason of church and state. The members of these organizations and groups will be joining together in Dorchester, Brooklyn County, with forensic lab, 13 sheriffs or more in South Carolina, violate state and federal law. The Homeland Credit 2002 was funded in 2002. We should have had our homeland ministered and enforced by now. I'm concerned about the wrongful arrest and accusation and observation of folk based upon their religious point of view, or knowledge of point of view, or their point of view against Israel. Because people now are being attacked for their point of view in America. Now. And so I'm one of them. That's a fact. I'm one of them. So I will be very clear in terms of my position, 350 years of slavery. Now, the governor to end around with a popular faith-based group to avoid the hate crime signed into state law bill. He avoided, he did end around. For 350 years, we in this state suffered under two constitutions that hated black folk. So if I'm going to be unpopular in this state, I'm going to be unpopular with style and class and good decorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
George Freeman, Susan Kershaw, Myra Richardson.
Good evening. George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road. I have only a couple of things tonight, and one of them is a good thing, and the other one is a sad thing. The first one is, I'd like to invite everyone here tonight, staff and audience, to a Juneteenth festival on the 50th that the CAGE organization is having from 12 to 6 p.m. I'd be glad, happy to see everybody's face out there. The second thing is, is a sad thing. I've been here a number of ti, no, I wouldn't say a number of times, I'd say a couple of times, where I've tried to get council to come up with funds to build a sidewalk in the six-mile community and a section of the highway that is a dangerous, it's a dangerous section, where there's a ditch on both sides of the road and a very small strip that you can walk along. A five-foot sidewalk in this area would save a lot of lives and make it better for the citizens in the community. It's only like a 100-foot stretch that needs to be built. The town of Mount Pleasant can build the rest. But this section is in the county, and the town of Mount Pleasant is dragging its feet as far as building a sidewalk in the community for the citizens. So I'm here tonight to request that the county come up with the money to correct this dangerous situation in the six-mile community by building this five-foot wide sidewalk in the six-mile community, a section that's in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Susan Kershaw, Myra Richardson, Sam Spence.
She's a lot taller than me. I'm Susan Kershaw. I'm, I live at 3605 Berry Hill Road on Johns Island. I've been following your conversations regarding the third transportation sales tax referendum, and I want to offer a different option. Instead of debating whether to bundle everything into one referendum, or whether to split the Mark Clark Expressway separately, separate from everything else, I want to suggest we split all of the new projects from all of the old ongoing projects. So, one referendum for ongoing projects, one referendum for new projects. This transportation sales tax is different from the prior two. It's so much bigger. It's more time, it's 25 years, it's more money, and it includes a lot more of the ongoing projects, the maintenance, the intersection improvements, CARTA, all of that. And that's why we should structure it differently. It is different. Voters should be able to approve the funding of ongoing work without being forced to also approve $3 billion of new projects. Splitting the referendum between the ongoing and the new projects will avoid pitting parts of the county against each other, and will also allow the voters to voice their opinions on two very distinct buckets of spending. New projects in one, ongoing work in the other. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Myra Richardson, Sam Spence, Josh Dix.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Myra Richardson. My address is 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant. I'm here talking about the Earl Johnson Lane Sewer Project with the Mount Pleasant Waterworks. We've been dealing with this issue since 2016, when we came home to orange dots on our trees, as I said before. I sent a packet to you all because I am urging you all to get into this with us and help us protect and save our community. Mount Pleasant Waterworks has never called us to the table. We are never at the table when we're being discussed. When they ask the question, "Well, we thought you would want your road paved," that means you're not communicating with us. The voices of the community need to be heard. When our cares and our concerns are not met or addressed, when we're not at the table, when we're not being able to tell you our needs and our wants, then what you're planning for us is basically turning into a plot against us. When I'm at a meeting, discussing, trying to figure out what's going on, and asking for full transparency, and I cannot receive full transparency on the full scope of this project, when there's an engineer that's attached to this project from 2021 to 2024, and when I walk into a meeting at Mount Pleasant Waterwork, I'm harassed, aggressively approached, and I have to fill out a police report because the engineer will not stop coming towards me because of a water deal that did not go to reach Hamlin Road. Hamlin Road has nothing to do with Earl Johnson Lane. Why is it that they're trying to get water from Boston Grove Road through a private residence, private landowner, to help a developer on Hamlin Road? We want the residents on Hamlin Road to have water.
Dr. Hamlin, go. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sam Spence, Josh Dix, and Emma Barry.
I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston. First, I want to thank and acknowledge Councilman Boykin and council for the request last week to work on ways to strengthen the urban growth boundary. I also want to thank council for adopting amendments on the historic preservation ordinance last month. It's important that these protections continue to evolve as we learn more about what works. And one thing we've learned throughout this process is the desire for protections in these historic communities. I know the term moratorium is not often spoken in these chambers, and I know that you all don't take this discussion lightly. I know it's not normal policy to adopt a moratorium, and you know that, but these are not normal conditions. The impacts of building restrictions completely outside of your control in Mount Pleasant and in Awandaw leave East Cooper historic districts, districts in the communities feeling increased pressure, pressure that we're also seeing on the sea islands. A moratorium on major subdivisions under these specific conditions could be one way to temper the impacts of those developments. But it isn't forever, and you all always have the right to reserve, to extend a shorter moratorium if you, if you want to, as the threat persists. It's not a blanket regulation on subdivision or development. There are many ways, there are many other uses for a property other than a major subdivision. And to be effective, a moratorium is responsive to a specific threat and works toward a specific solution. So I'd encourage you to think about it like this. Think about it like another evolution of the historic preservation ordinance. Use this time to develop ways to make these protections permanent, whether by additional amendments to the historic preservation ordinance or overlay districts, which we've talked about working toward for a long time now. We've talked about working toward permanent solutions for a long time, so I urge you to use this moratorium as a tool to do that. Thanks.
Josh Dix, Emma Barry.
Good evening, council. My name's Josh Dix. I'm the vice president of advocacy for the Charleston Trident Association of Realtors. And I'm here tonight to speak about the moratorium. As just was said, moratoriums tend to have an intended goal that you seek to achieve. And one of the things that we would like to know is what is the intended goal that will be achieved after this 10-year moratorium? Are we going to be installing water and sewer to these settlement communities throughout the county? Are there going to be infrastructure improvements throughout the county that benefit these settlement communities? What is the intended goal? You've got the timeline, but you don't have the goal. There are a lot of issues with these moratoriums. Needless to say, there's several fair housing issues that come to mind. There's a lot of ways to protect property. Downzoning property, moratoriums, those don't protect property. You can still sell property, you can still transact, it can still be passed down. But the only way to really protect property is with conservation easements, deed restrictions, voluntary programs that property owners can enter into. These types of heavy-handed mandates don't do anything to stop future developments. They don't stop these properties from being developed. All that you're doing is forcing these communities, these properties, to be annexed into the neighboring, the nearest neighboring community. You're making more problems instead of creating fewer ones. We have a lot of issues that we're trying to deal with in this community. Housing is a big problem that we're trying to deal with. These Band-Aid approaches don't solve the problem. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Emma Barry.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council tonight. My name is Emma Barry, and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Project Manager of the Coastal Conservation League, located at 131 Spring Street. The league is in full support of the proposed subdivision moratorium for the unincorporated Charleston County Historic Settlement Communities. While the amendments to the historic preservation ordinance leave these communities vulnerable, vulnerable, a moratorium will offer protection while more permanent safeguards can be put in place. Thank you, council, for listening to the voices of these communities and recognizing the need for additional protections over these valuable cultural landscapes that continue to tell the history of our Low Country. The league does not always support building moratoriums, as they can have adverse effects, often increasing housing costs and pushing demand to areas outside of the moratorium boundaries. However, in this, in this case, a subdivision moratorium is necessary. Ten Mile finds itself surrounded by building moratoriums in both Mount Pleasant and Awandaw. Phillips and Beefield also face increased encroaching growth, growth pressures. However, for this subdivision moratorium to reach full efficacy, we must be diligent in the work we do while it is in place. In Beaufort County, a cultural protection overlay was designed and adopted in the late 90s to protect the historical cultural landscape and gullible culture of St. Helena Island. Today, with threats of incompatible development on the island, the CPO remains strong. This is example of a protective tool could be used as a template for Charleston County to create its own cultural overlay zone that could be applied much more efficiently to historic settlement communities. Additionally, forming a committee or task force to think creatively on other ways to protect the cultural and historical significance of these communities and provide meaningful resources would be a useful way to add in other safeguards during the subdivision moratorium. The Conservation League offers its full support in any way we can be helpful in the next steps forward. We believe this subdivision moratorium will alleviate pressure while giving time to ensure these communities are protected in other ways, so that they may thrive and flourish for generations to come. Once again, thank you, council.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it on our public comments? I'm going to reconvene County Council. Councilmember Jenny Honeycutt is here, is with us. She's not here, but she's with us on Zoom. So welcome her comments as well. First item.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, if we are going to take up planning and public works and make a recommendation, I'd like to transfer over to our county council meeting before we finish this agenda.
Yes, sir. I was going to do that at the end. I was going to do that after 7:00. We could, we could move up.
Can we take on planning and public works now, and then we can do everything and for the county council?
We can do public works now. Is that okay with you, Mr. Moody?
Whatever this body would like.
Let's go start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Public works. Mr. Moody?
Call that planning, public works meeting to order them. Just one item. We have need, Mrs. Hamm, for an executive session.
Yes, sir. There's a need for executive session for me to give this council some legal advice.
With pleasure, body.
Mr. Chair of this committee, and then our chairman overall, is it something that we can discuss publicly? I mean, must it require an executive session?
It, well, the legal advice that I need to give you does require an executive session. However, there's plenty that I think you can discuss, if you so choose, in public when you return.
I'll move to go with executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Boykin. Sir, second.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please. Yes, sir. We can, we can discuss when we come back if you'd like.
I just meant the vote is to be.
Vote is to go into executive session. That's correct. Mr. Warman.
I will speak on, on defensive executive session. I, I understand the position Ms. Hamm is in here, where she does not want to be the one responsible for waiving attorney-client privilege on anything we're going to discuss. You know, I, I fully appreciate, as this discussion has evolved, there have been a lot of times where I have felt a lot of tension between wanting the public and folks to understand. between wanting the public and folks to understand sort of what we're being, what the legal ramifications of things are, to kind of inform where we're going with stuff. I understand that pressure. I think we are all free as members to go a little rogue and, and say whatever you want once we come back in here. But I do think, you know, it's frankly, for Ms. Hamm's sake, I think we should take it. And then having, knowing what the advice is, it's up to everyone how they want to deal with that. So I would speak in defense of executive sessions. Support the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cowan.
You know, thank you so much, and I, you know, again, respect very passionately the position of Mr. Werman and certainly definitely appreciate Ms. Hamm's expertise in this area. We all could have been called, you know, if there were such issues that, you know, could require each individual councilperson's contemplation. I really feel that there are matters that we can discuss right here in the public because oftentimes we go into executive session, and some of that stuff is really not privileged. And so I just want to be very clear that some of these conversations need to be debated and discussed publicly right here openly before the people.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Seven ayes, two nays. Kibrovsky and Middleton, nay. We're adjourned.
We're back from executive session, no votes were taken. Mr. Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I moved to adopt a temporary moratorium for 24 months on acceptance and processing of all major subdivisions applications in the Charleston County Historic Districts and direct staff to research any necessary changes to the ZLDR and our comprehensive plan to promote development that is consistent with the character of the historic districts and meets the needs of Charleston County.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Pryor, second by Mr. Middleton. Mr. Darby, discussion.
Mr. Pryor, is it possible that we can add...
Dr. Third reading.
Is it possible that we could include along with staff the Coastal Conservation League and Historic Preservation Society?
I think they will automatically reach out to them. I don't know. I think they would have to automatically reach out to them.
When they go to these...
Yeah. You know, that's what staff does already.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Mr. Boykin, would you like to be recognized?
Yes, sir. If I could, I'd like to direct staff to reach out to the Beefield community. I'll be happy to be engaged with that so that they can learn about this, our potential benefit protection. So I want to hear what, how they feel about it before. I support what Mr. Pryor is doing, but I don't want to put this on those folks until they have a chance to be alerted to it and be engaged. Thanks.
Discussion. Mr. Kowalski.
I just want to thank the committee and thank all the people that came out from the historic settlement communities to make this happen. I think this is a big victory in preserving what's unique and special about Charleston and preserving the bonds of family and land. And in the history of Charleston, this is doing something important, and the people should know that they were heard and their voices mattered. And it's an honor to pay tribute to all the generations that came to keep that together to this time, and I'm honored to be on council to be part of this. Thank you.
Any further comment? Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. I'm concerned about this. I agree, we need some protections for Ten Mile and these other communities, and we've tried to give them before. I am concerned that we're... I thought this was just for Ten Mile. I didn't realize there were other communities involved. I think that, I do think that an overlay district is what we need, and I think that our staff will get to that point. I am concerned about a moratorium. I don't like the word moratorium, but I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about people's property rights as well, and so I'm not sure I'm going to be able to support it. But when it gets along in a different form, I may be able to support it, but right now, I'm not able to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Warman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to Chairman Sasse's point, I mean, I don't like the idea of a moratorium myself, but I think for folks who've been following this saga for about a year now, we've been dealing with some fallout from, you know, the original HPO, and this isn't, you know, to discredit anyone who was involved in developing that, but it was sort of a new thing. We didn't realize, I think, that there were some issues with state law, particularly with respect to subdivisions. So we have been, through a number of different efforts, trying to reinstate what I think would fairly be described as protections that a lot of folks kind of thought already were in place. You know, I'm willing to support this despite my, you know, distaste for the moratorium aspect of it, given that context, given the fact that it's pretty narrow. I mean, we're applying this to a subset category of subdivisions in three specific areas. You know, it sounds like maybe, depending on discussion, perhaps Beefield might ultimately be excluded, so maybe that would only apply to two. So, you know, I think I would give credit to Mr. Pryor for kind of cutting to the chase after realizing us, you know, going, doing about three different maneuvers to try and scramble in the wake of what we realized the situation was in terms of state law and how it affected the protections we thought we had. Mr. Pryor kind of said, well, we've got a tool to use, a temporary tool, to find a more permanent solution, which I think probably is an overlay district, but I'd give credit to Mr. Pryor for that. And I think reducing it from 10 years to two years kind of appropriately recognizes that it is a temporary measure. This can't be the permanent solution. And it becomes, you know, it becomes more in the community's control to develop that permanent solution if it takes the form of an overlay district. So that's why I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Warman. Mr. Middleton, anything?
And, you know, I continue to contend that staff needs time to work this out. Six months certainly would be too short to give them the due diligence that they would need to do all of the things that were just directed and asked of them. Definitely 10 years, you know, that may have been ostentatious and a far reach. I think two years is appropriate, recognizing the purpose to formulate some protection, some further protections for all of these communities, which could be different. And so we don't know specifically what each individual community would prefer until they are engaged. And so something needs to happen. I do think that this is the right direction. I don't know what other form. I heard our chairman say maybe in another form, but I don't know what other form this could take, except the fact that each of them would customize whatever, you know, the intended goal for them would be. So, you know, again, we did say overlay protection for some, but that may not be a universal thing for each of those communities. So, you know, that would be the only unique characteristic as it relates to each of these individual things. Or as we talked about, they may decide, hey, we like things as they are and do nothing. And if that's the case, we'd let them out. And so there's no binding component for the individual settlement community. So I think that this is not a bad thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Darby?
Yes, just the idea of the arrogance of the developer, that almost got under my skin, as if this council is somewhat incompetent. We don't know what we're doing. Because I think what happened is that you look at the effect as opposed to the cause. If you weren't just raping these black communities, there would not be a need for this. I don't see these big developers going to Kiowa. They're not going to Wild Dunes. They're not going to Seabrook, but you go to these poor black communities. But then I need to stop what I need to say because I have to take counsel to Ms. Craven. She taught me within the first week or two as council that when you got five votes, keep your mouth shut. So I'm gonna keep my mouth shut tonight, sir, but I really want to go off.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. You were gonna steal my thunder.
And in conclusion, you know, and I want it to be known, this is why we're doing this, that people came in saying protect our property. Not one of those folks came in and said they want to sell their property. So for the ostriches of smoking marriage to say these people can't sell their property, well, then they've told me that I don't want to sell my property. I want protection, and I want to make sure the neighborhood is not over and around. I want to keep it, you know, as rural as I can, as historic as I can. So, you know, I think it was referenced that these folks can't sell their property. They don't want to sell their property. But even if they did want to sell, they still could sell. So nothing prevents them from selling their property. And, you know, I take the approach of, you know, when someone wanted to buy the property and wanted to be a distance from their neighbors, it could bring more value to the property anyway. But these folks are not saying I want to sell my property. They're saying I want to save the community for my generations that come behind me, and we're asking for your help. And that's why I'm, you know, approaching it the way it is, to help these folks who actually need help.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor. I will comment, and then we'll go to vote that Mr. Darby and Ms. Craven taught you, and I learned that from you. When you got five votes, you shut up and go away. So I'm gonna shut up and go away and call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Roll call, Mrs. Worster.
Mr. Boykin?
Nay pending the outreach being completed with Beefield.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt, I think, is absent. She's not quite on yet. Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
There's three nays, one, two, three, four, five ayes, and one absent.
Good discussion.
Ms. Honeycutt up? Did y'all try to get Ms. Honeycutt? Back up?
Ms. Honeycutt, are you there to vote on this?
She'll be back. I think we lost her for a minute.
I think we ought to wait and ask her because this is important.
She had said that she was gonna take a minute to get back on when we were in executive session. I was getting off the phone with her.
Good discussion. This meeting is, this public works meeting is concluded. Mr. Sasse, back to you. Good discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Chair, move to approve 4A through F.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Reverend Middleton and Mr. Moody to approve 4A through 4F. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Third reading ordinances, Charleston Home Program, 1138 Oxbo Drive, ordinance third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the real property located at 1138 Oxbo Drive totaling approximately .52 acres, parcel ID number 42802000902 Palmetto Community Developers LLC. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with eight ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Six, second reading ordinance, 6A, ZRZ 32400151 Rutledge Tomb Site, ordinance second reading.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at 1592 Joe Rouse Road, a .07 acre portion of the parcel identification number 5830000016 from the Special Management S3 Zoning District to the Rutledge Tomb Site Plan Development PD 189 zoning district. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Roger.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Okay, 6B, 2177 Ashley River Road, ordinance second reading.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan MAP 3.1.13 Ashley River Road Corridor Overlay Zoning District to amend the zoning and future land use designation for the real property located at 2177 Ashley River Road, parcel identification number 354120006 from neighborhood commercial designation to the commercial, community commercial designation. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. 6D, Financial Incentives for 7614 South Rail LLC.
Have to go back to 6C.
The ZLDR for 2177.
Oh, I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ordinance number 1202, as amended Charleston, or sorry, Chapter 5 Overlay and Special Purpose Zoning District MAP 5.10 and MAP 5.10.C to amend the zoning designation for the real property located at 2177 Ashley River Road, parcel identification number 354120006 from neighborhood commercial designation to the community commercial designation. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. Now 6D, Financial Incentives for 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag, formerly Project Stripe. Ordinance second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of the fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Charleston County and 7614 South Rail LLC, including any related and affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates, including Allegiance Flag Supply LLC as sponsor affiliate whereby Charleston County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax arrangement with 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC as a sponsor affiliate provided for the payment by 7614 South Rail LLC and Allegiance Flag Supply LLC as a sponsor affiliate of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Question. What is the amount of the financial incentives? I did not catch that. And if you can't answer it publicly, just let me know afterwards in terms of the amount.
Mr. Dykes, I think.
I'll just talk to Mr. Dykes. Yeah, just second read. Yeah, I'll find out. Yes, aye. My own.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. 6E, Fiscal Year 25 County Budget, ordinance second reading.
An ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025 herein after referred to as fiscal year 2025, making appropriations from the general fund and other funds of Charleston County for such purposes and further providing for the levy of taxes for corporate purposes of Charleston County, including the Andal McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Northern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical College for fiscal year 2025, providing for the appropriations from such special funds created for the purposes of the Andal McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, East Cooper Fire District, Southern Charleston County Fire District, West St. Andrews Fire District, and Trident Technical Colleges, in order to supply the necessary functions of the unit, providing for the budget control of the appropriations by the Charleston County Council and the county administrator, making provisions for the fiscal affairs of Charleston County, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to $50 million for Charleston County and up to $1 million for the Andal McClellanville Consolidated Fire Protection District, with the right to amend up to third reading. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you. 6 Six F, special purpose districts, Ordinance Second Reading.
An ordinance approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025 and directing the auditor of Charleston County to levy the necessary millage and the treasurer to collect taxes for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission, the Cooper River Park and Playground Commission, the North Charleston District, the St. Andrews Parish Parks and Playground Commission, the St. John's Fire District and the St. Paul's Fire District, and providing for the issuance of tax anticipation notes in an amount up to 3 million for the Charleston County Park and Recreation Commission and up to 1.1 million for the St. Andrews Parks and Playground Commission and up to 1.5 for the St. John's Fire District. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to approve one at a time, seven A.
Yeah, second.
Seven A, moved and seconded, request to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, uh, ordinance first reading.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement of Dominion Energy South Carolina Inc. on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel ID 411130004 located at Leeds Avenue and Headquarters Road, North Charleston, South Carolina.
Seven B?
Move to approve seven B.
Moved and seconded to approve seven B. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a utility easement to Dominion Energy of South Carolina Inc. on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel ID 411130004 located at Leeds Avenue, North Charleston.
Seven C?
Chairman?
Mr. Moody?
I move for committee recommendation with the following amendment. Remove the Johnny Dodds project from the list and replace it with the Long Point Road Corridor project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Any discussion? Mr. Kabrowski?
This is seven C, the transportation sales tax referendum.
Yes, sir.
I would still, um, request that we bifurcate it, that, you know, it's an awesome responsibility we have. We're proposing $5.3 billion, um, for a sales tax referendum over 25 years. And I feel we have the responsibility to take care of the transportation needs of the county. And I hear that, um, the way I perceive this is basically, uh, $1.8 billion for 526 and the other things are fillers. And I want to know before we vote on this, um, how much of the, is the financing of the balance is towards the 526 specifically so we can get a sense of what percentage of this bond referendum, um, has to do with 526 before? And I have some other questions, but can anybody answer that?
Mr. Thigpen, can you answer that?
I'll have to get back to you on that particular answer. It's not all, but, um, it is the majority.
So it's, I think if I'm mistaken, there's like 530,000 for the, um, financing. Am I correct in that? Approximately, and of that, most of that would be towards the financing of 526. So the real cost is more like 2.3 billion.
I would need to verify those figures.
Was it approximately correct?
I would have to verify those figures.
But this so, because this is a public meeting and I, no disrespect to you, and this, so people can know what we're voting on, they have a right to know that the majority of the, um, five or 600,000 in financing for this is for 526. So somewhere between 2.2 billion and 2.3 billion of this bond, of the sales tax referendum, which gets close to half, is all about 526. Just so that people make a knowing vote and the public knows what we're doing. Is that, would that be fair to say? You said the majority.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Counselman, that, that's kind of a political question. I don't really know if that's a staff question to, and plus, if you could give a little more, maybe? Heads up. Heads up on asking for specific numbers like that that can't be calculated generally in Mac's head, although he can do most things in his head.
I believe, I believe that.
I don't see it as political at all. We're asking to make a vote on, on, like I said, $5.3 billion over 25 years and most of this with one project. And I, I would be fair to say then that it's 1.8 billion specifically for 526 and there's five or 600,000 for, um, uh, the, the financing of that, the majority of which would be for 526. So somewhere between, um, 2.2 billion, 2.3 billion is of this bond referendum is 526. And again, my concern is the half cent tail sex ordinance states that the funds can be used for quote, for financing the cost of highways, roads, streets, bridges and other transportation related projects, facilities and drainage facilities related thereof. And I think that, um, also in mass transit systems operated by Charleston County, that on the coast we have, we're gonna face over the next 25 years of historic sea level rises. And I'm very concerned that, I'd rather see that money distributed more evenly than the deal of rising sea levels and, and how that affects our highways. And that's one reason I couldn't oppose, I have to oppose this. And also how, as financial stewards of the taxpayers' money, we can put so much into one project. We have responsibility all over the county. And I just feel we jeopardize, in a sense, we debated this and, and, you know, and I respect, uh, Mr. Pryor very much about safety. You brought that out. That's a concern, but looking at the county as a whole, if we're putting all the eggs in one basket and people don't want that, we're jeopardizing drainage issues and, and transportation issues that we owe, um, a responsibility to everybody in the county. And by putting all in one, uh, thing like this and not bifurcating, we're jeopardizing that. And then what do we do if that doesn't happen? Because we said last week that a lot of the projects from the first, from the bond, the sales tax referendum eight years ago have been completed. And my question is how do we take on a huge project like this, which is basically a state highway system, when we haven't completed the last one? So what kind of timetable would there be? If anybody can answer is if this does passes, do the existing projects have to be completed first from eight years ago? Or would they go right into 526? And what would be the timeframe if it does passes before anybody would be able to use this? Can anybody answer that?
It depends on five people on council.
They can bypass the projects that aren't done already from eight years ago?
I can.
Would that be posted on the bond referendum so people know that?
Excuse me, uh. Mr. Kabrowski, the, um, we were all given a list of what's exactly on the, on this sales tax referendum. And I'm, I'm remiss. I don't have my list with me. I can't remember the numbers. I think the Mark Clark was 1.8 billion. Um, but I mean, we had some other numbers. The Mark Clark, I think, was 1.8 billion. As far as the second half cent sales tax, um, I'll be glad to sit down with you and Mr. Thigpen and Mr. Guile and we can go over all those numbers so that you'll be ready for the next meeting.
I feel I am ready for the next meeting, sir. I feel the public needs to hear this. We see this, but this is a public debate and we're debating $5.3 billion. And I feel that this should be aired in public, how much it is. They don't have the same information we have and that's why I asked about the financing, because it does raise it to almost half of the total project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out, uh, I, I do believe that we all had occasion to meet with Mr. Thigpen and staff. I know I did. I do remember that there were several charrettes and/or town halls or meetings across the county specifically about this transportation sales tax and all of the contemplated projects. And I do also recall that, and I'm just saying just from, based on what I have experienced, and we all did also receive that list of prioritized projects. And so I just want to make sure, certain that we are fair, you know, in our assessment because these were processes that we've already engaged in.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. Mr. Warman was next, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and, you know, I think, Mr. Kabrowski, if you're talking about the depth service number from the now infamous pie chart, I think it's more like 750 million rather than 500. So I, I share your concerns about, you know, wanting to, to have a clearer understanding of just how much of the pie is sort of devoted to, to the Mark Clark extension. Um, and as far as the concerns about sequencing, I mean, I think that's, that's a fair question to, to want to know is, you know, we've got 12 projects that are gonna make the new potential projects list. Um, we've got some spillover projects from the, the last sales tax. How is all of this gonna be sequenced? Um, I think that's a fair question to ask. I'll, I'll look forward to hearing more about that. I, I did want to just, just to be a procedural sort of knack here is like, the ordinance that we're seeing here, we're reading sort of the title of the ordinance. This does not have the language. Is, is that gonna be part of this ordinance or would that come back before August? I just want to get where we're at.
That will be present almost immediately after tonight.
By like third reading?
Generally, on your first reading, you, you're.
Sure.
Dealing with the title and then the, um, by second reading, you'll have the full ordinance.
I, I, I understand where we're at. Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Um, I, I do want to ask some questions about the potential projects here. You know, I know Rivers Avenue is, is listed on there. Um, I'm assuming that's the mobility improvements for Rivers Avenue, not the Durant Overpass?
Uh, yes, sir. That, uh, it is intended to make that last connection between subdivisions and the LCRT sidewalks, um, bike paths, that kind of thing where they exist in subdivisions, but they won't extend out to Rivers Avenue, is to make that last connection.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, and I was just clarifying because it just said Rivers Avenue. I, I kind of assumed that was the one. I mean, by my math, you know, we've got projects that were sort of listed as, as needing about 1.2 billion dollars in this list of 12. We've got it budgeted for a pie slice of 811 million. Some folks are gonna have to take a haircut. I understand we're, you know, applying for different, um, you know, grants and stuff as, as we'll always do, but I, I mean, has that been discussed with the cities? I know that they all submitted priori, prioritization lists, but has that all been sorted out as to which projects are gonna get sort of full county funding, which are gonna get partial county funding, where we're gonna come up with those gaps?
Um, Mr. Warman, um, the list was generated by council members. I was not privy to those conversations.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, this is Jenny. Is Mr. Boykin next?
Mr. Boykin's next, and you're after him.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to respond to, um, the funding concerns and I wanted to point out that in the duration of the first two transportation sales tax, Charleston County received nearly $300 million in outside funding.
Okay, well, that's great. I just, I'm, I'm just asking, like, we got these lists from the city. We're obviously implying some, some partial funding here and I'm all for, you know, looking for outside funding. I think we're gonna be doing that regardless. Um, but I, I guess I just, you know, to the extent that this process began with city prioritization, I'm just wondering if that was, I mean, I, it is a political decision by this body. I just didn't know, had they sort of signed off on that or, or what was the input? For instance, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm troubled by the lack of the Durant Overpass being on here. I'm troubled by the fact that, you know, I'm guessing Rivers Avenue mobility projects are probably gonna be one of the, the projects taking a haircut because it was a, a pretty large, um, 142 million projected project. So I just, I, I'm just wondering, has that been coordinated on the front end or, or is that just sort of something that, um, that we're, we're gonna obviously have to seek more money for it?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jenny. I'm happy to speak to that. Uh, Mr. Warman, I can't speak for everyone else on council, but it was my intention, there were two issues that created, um, some ability to scale and some ability to create some flexibility in these numbers. Number one is many of these projects are scalable. And so for instance, Rivers Avenue, we don't, we may not have to build every sidewalk connected to the BRT. And so we need to build into the fact that we wouldn't complete all of those. And for many other projects is the same. Likewise, on many of our projects, once they are shovel ready, they are available for, uh, federal funding. So every project we have right now, large project, we have a large federal funding element and we needed to contemplate that. And so the reason I put in for my selections was that they would have available federal funding at some point in the future and therefore we don't want to be left with extra money. We want to make sure we have enough projects on this list to cover all of the things we may collect over 25 years. So there is some flexibility. We do not know, sitting here today, what every project is gonna cost or what every project will be permitted. Uh, we face challenges every day in conducting the projects we have approved to get them done because folks either don't want to take a tree down or they don't want the scale of the project that we've proposed. And so I, I have hoped, at least in my assessment of this, to build in that flexibility, but we have to start somewhere. And so this is where I think, um, is the best, the, the best approach.
Understood. I just, you know, kind of wanted to clarify where all that came from. Um, you know, I mean, listen, I've, I've made it pretty clear. I'm a, uh, in favor of the two questions. I think that, um, these are decisions that have to be made as far as what gets prioritized and, and when and where. I think that giving the folks, uh, the people of this county the option to, um, preserve more flexibility, which I think almost indisputably, having two questions preserve more flexibility is a, a better approach. I think that we can sort of pick between our many futures that way. Um, again, I have some concerns, not only about the amount of this that's going to 526, Again, I have some concerns, not only about the amount of this that's going to 526, but about some of the projects that did not make the sort of final cut here. So obviously, I can't support this, but just wanted to get some of that information out there and understand it a little bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Warman. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My concern is the asking of the question on the referendum. I don't know the young lady's name in the blue, but that's the most common sense approach that we should applaud and allow to happen. But the majority says no, and why this trepidation or trepidity of not separating is beyond comprehension. I don't know whether they are fearful that they would lose, more than likely that's the reason why, but I just don't understand the simplicity of just separating the question and allow the voters to go from there. As a matter of fact, I had a long dissertation in terms of my reasons, but I'm going to do something of an anti-Miss Craven is that I don't have the five votes, so I need to keep my mouth shut anyhow. So let me, let me move on. So I won't read this right here, but just the basic question that I want to ask, what harm will be done because of the bifurcation? Or, you know, why is there trepidity in separating the question? And what is the hurt of separating the question? I really don't understand, and I think that's the best result for the citizens. But again, the young lady in blue, that's the most common sense approach I've, I've heard, ma'am, but I doubt if the majority of us are thinking along those lines. Thank you, Mr. Sasse.
Any further discussion?
One quick one.
All right, Mr. Cabroski.
I stand corrected. I used the figure 500. It's, the word was $748 million for the debt, and if the majority of that is for 526, as I heard tonight, so somewhere about between the actual cost of the $5.3 billion sales tax referendum, specifically for one project, is almost 60%. Because if you put 1.8 billion and add this 80% of that, you know, you're going to get to 2.4 billion. So somewhere about $2.4 billion will be for one project. And I just feel that we have a duty for the, what we're going to do now is for the next 25 years of Charleston County, and we need to look at all the things we have to do with drainage and everywhere, and that's why I think we need to bifurcate it to give people a choice, as Mr. Darby said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out that I know definitively that there were several council persons who ran as a part of their platform for county council completing 526. And that was transparent, apparent, and open, and they won their seat. And so, I don't think any, this is me personally, I'm just saying, I don't think anyone is afraid of a standalone component for 526 based on the public will. Personally, I think it makes sense just to ask one question. All of these seem to be similar, although that's debatable, but under the same umbrella based on transportation and road projects. But there were, everybody that I know that's supporting it ran publicly on that, and so there is no fear in having a standalone question because individuals have won saying, "I am for completing 526," and people voted for them, some of them overwhelmingly.
Thank you, sir.
Well, since you made that phone, let me take it out. Let me go say what I got to say. I really want to...
It was not a challenge.
Oh, it wasn't a challenge, sir?
No, no, sir. It was just a statement.
Okay.
It was just a statement. I just wanted to just reiterate the fact that people have been on the public record for this for many years.
Got you, sir.
And there have been those on the public record against it for many years. So I mean, again, there's no fear for bifurcating on my part.
Yes, sir.
There's no fear. I'm just saying, those who have been publicly for it have been publicly for it and are still publicly for it, and certainly, having the one question does not invoke, you know, because individuals are afraid that standing alone is going to lose. They won their seat by virtue of standing on 526 completion across the county.
Right. Yes, sir, if I may. Are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes.
But at that time that you're running on that platform, I don't think the citizenry had in mind that it was going to take $2.2 billion to build a 526. So again, that's where I like to use the term, well, the elephant in the room, sir. I think that is the problem. Again, I think if the questions were separated, it'd be better, at least from my perspective, I would never be in favor of 526, as if I were old enough back at that time, I'd never be in favor of 26 because of destruction among other things. So, but no, sir, not being defensive, but I just feel that the citizenry with whom I've spoken with most recently, that they would like to have this question separated. But again, the majority rules, and we just have to move on. But as Chief Joseph said, when he was forced to surrender, if this is passed and 526 is to be, I will fight no more forever.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. There being no further comments, I think we should vote. All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make sure they had, write their minute up a third reading on there. I don't know if that was in the motion.
Was that in the motion, Mr. Moody?
I'll accept that.
I'll accept the second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
We can do a roll call vote. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Cabroski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Nay.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
The motion passes with one, two, three, four, five, six ayes and three nays.
Thank you very much. All right, next.
I gotta read the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, please.
I gotta read the ordinance.
I'll get the 7D.
An ordinance to levy and impose a one-half of 1% sales and use tax subject to a referendum within Charleston County pursuant to section 4-37-30 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina in 1976, as amended, to define the specific purposes and designate the projects for which the proceeds of the tax may be used, to provide the maximum time for which such tax may be imposed, to provide the estimated cost of the projects funded from the proceeds of the tax, to provide for the countywide referendum on the imposition of the sales and use tax and the issuance of general obligation bonds, and to prescribe the contents of the ballot questions in the referendum, to provide for the conduct of the referendum by the Board of Elections and Voter Registration of Charleston County, to provide for the administration of the tax if approved, and to provide for the payment of the taxes if approved, and to provide for matters, other matters related thereto with amendments up to third reading.
Thank you. Mr. Pryor, 7D.
7D, move for committee recommendation with the right to amend up a third reading.
Second.
Move by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
This?
Roll call vote.
Off of the racket.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Roll call. All vote, please, just to make sure.
This is for the same count. Okay.
No, 7D.
Yes, thank you.
This is for the moratorium. Mr. Boykin?
Nay pending the outreach to B field.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
She must have gone.
Mr. Cabroski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
The motion passes with five ayes, three nays, and one absent. And an ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ordinance number 1202, as amended at Chapter 8 subdivision regulations and Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the County of Charleston at Section 21-6 subdivision plat application reports to provide for the temporary moratorium for 24 months on the acceptance and processing of major subdivision applications in Charleston County historic districts with amendments up to third reading.
Thank you. Council comments. Reverend Middleton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for a very productive meeting tonight, I thought. I heard Mr. Cabroski talk about rising sea levels, which then put in my mind, you know, the Climate Action Plan, we need to start thinking about that again as that's coming up pretty soon. We're teeing it up. And then he talked about spending, prioritizing spending. Well, certainly, having a climate action plan that complements our, our comprehensive plan would, you know, put this county well in line specifically for federal dollars, state dollars, and other competitive grants that would enable us, you know, to move those big moves and strategic actions forward. Just wanted to at least put that back on our burner. And just a very, a word of commendation and thanks to Ms. Worster and to Iman for just stepping in and stepping up. And surely, just again, Charleston County graduations occurring this week, congratulating all graduates, parents, school officials for their hard work this year.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a couple, couple random thoughts. I'm glad we all voted for the American Flag Company this time. That was, that was good to see. But I didn't mention in the discussion, but there's just, there's just no winning with some of these, some of these folks. I mean, I was thrilled with a very six, very strong bipartisan 6-3 vote tonight. You know, they complained that things aren't getting done fast enough, and we go build as you go, and then you want to finance, and they go, well, then it's too much for interest. I mean, which is it? And then they say, well, last time the question wasn't clear enough. It's in bright lights this time. Well, we don't like the way you're doing it. When if we separated it, they'd go, yeah, but that's a leading question. I mean, there's just no winning. There's no winning with these folks. So, you know, we do have a duty, Mr. Cabroski. Prior councils had a duty. We built roads all around you. If you hate roads so much, take your sailboat. I doubt you'll do that, but that's, you know, Mr. Pryor said last meeting, you know, it's that people that complain about it use the roads all the time. So it's, it's just really kind of laughable. But I did want to thank too, finally, Mayor Cogswell came out today with a, with a release that was very strong, and the city of Charleston's, we're going to need all the, all the municipalities' leaders to join hands with us. He wrote a letter to the Joint Bond Review Committee in December, and he reaffirmed that today. Media outlets' liable mission was unfortunate, but he remains a very strong partner of ours, and that was great to see. And then finally, Mr. Sasse, when we get past the budget and TST, all of us kind of underneath the radar, all of us received what I think is a kind of troubling audit report. Unfortunately, auditor's been pretty busy this year pertaining to the financial, the county's financial commitment to the animal society. We are covering every municipality in the county, and the record-keeping was noted as being weak, and we need to get our municipal partners and county around the table because we have been carrying this burden far, far too long, not covering, covering not only the unincorporated areas, but all the municipalities. And I think in the comments, they've, they've kicked in 150 or 200,000. We're up to 2.5, $2.5 million. So we're carrying a lot of water for these municipalities. So I think we've got to get everybody around the table and find out what's equitable.
2.4.
2.4, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir. In reference to the moratorium, I wish we had a sense of history and why the land is important to so many people, in particular, a certain group. Just a little point of history. My slave forefathers worked this land for free for 244 years, 244 years. And was given nothing. As a matter of fact, Frederick Douglass begged the federal government, "Please give these freedmen 40 acres and a mule." Did not do so. So here you have former slaves, penniless, illiterate, with nothing. As a matter of fact, some historians stated that freedmen were worst off in freedom than they were in slavery because they had nothing, no shelter to cover his head. So he worked hard, arduously, and he worked hard for the land. That's what he did. And now, African-Americans lose over 800,000 acres of land per year. And we've got these rich developers coming, trying to do, or take away the land. That's all we have is the land, and if we lose that, we have nothing, nothing at all. And then there's some of us who say that we don't like moratoriums. Well, here I am with these developers coming in to take the land. That's almost like pouring water on a drowning man. That's what it feels like. Or it feels like I've been baptized in ice water. It's not a good feeling. This moratorium, here I am drowning, and here's a helicopter, and the waves are high. The water's cold. Sharks are circling, and a helicopter comes to me, and I'm supposed to say, "I don't want to like, I don't like a helicopter?" Is that, that's what I'm supposed to say because I don't like a helicopter? No, get me out of this. So this moratorium is getting us out of this because nothing is more important to poor people than land. That's all we have. So the conversation about this or that, because already your pockets are gagging with super fluidity, what more do you want? That's all we have. I just don't like the arrogance of it, that's all. I'm through, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cabroski?
Continue what Mr. Darby said. I read something profound today, and I want to read it. It says, "What the people of the Low Country should realize is that this region is, in a sense, like a national park. It has many of the attractions of a national park, and great areas of it have more natural beauty and more historic interest than many of the national parks." That was written by Mr. Sasse's grandfather. I read that today, and I wish we would all take that to heart. And I think that I echo what Mr. Darby said. I'm honored and proud that the B County Council for a time, when we recognize the importance of the historic settlement communities, and we are in relation to the unincorporated areas like town councils because they don't have a town council. We act as that, and that's part of why we're here today, and they're surrounded by Mount Pleasant and Ten Mile, Ten Mile is by Mount Pleasant and Allendale, and all the development is crushing them. And if we didn't do this, they would be overrun, and there'd be one continuing subdivision all the way through them. That's why we're here. I mean, it's all, anybody that's traveled through there would see that you have Dunes West, you have Park West and Carolina Park. This is the very next step. This is why we see all the interest from developers and those who represent developers and their interests. That's what that was about, and we did something important. We listened to the people that lived there, and we honored the generations that came before them. And on 526, you know, we don't have to insult each other. We all come from different perspectives on this. I think we look for whatever we do on this is going to affect for the next 25 years of how we deal with transportation and roadways. And I do stand, I've learned not to do math in my head by looking at the 1.8 billion that is earmarked specifically for 526. You take the most of the $748 million for the financing, it means about half of the $5.3 billion or more is all about 526. So my sense is why it's put together is because we have a referendum, like that's the only project we have to do for 25 years, and everything else is filler. I don't think that's fair to the county. We have many needs over the county to prepare for, and I, that's why I thought we should bifurcate it, to give people a chance. If people could disagree, some on safety, but I, for all the reasons we've debated over this time, I feel that we made a mistake by putting it all together because the, we have to be responsible. What do we do? We can't all bet on everything. And again, since we've come to this stage, it still rankles me that we spent, I heard again, one of the reasons why we're short-falling $400,000 or more is that we expect to get money, the hope from the person, to get money from the federal government. Well, I remind everybody that we spent $75 million based on this to do the right-of-ways and appraisals for that, and if we don't pass that, that'll be money basically thrown out the window. Nobody in their right mind would gamble $7500, $750, but to have spent $75 million on a contingency, and if this doesn't pass, that'll be money that will not be put to use for the taxpayers of the county. And I do feel it's irresponsible to put all of our eggs in one basket because what if it doesn't pass? It means that we won't be able to continue the projects that we heard are still not done from the last one, and I didn't hear an answer today of how we're going to prioritize this. Are we going to continue the major projects that are left over from eight years ago and then continue to go right into 526 or how that is going to be done? I feel those are questions that should fairly be answered before we ask the people to burden themselves for, you know, billions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Well, I for one will say that I would not, I certainly support having a bifurcated question. I'm sure that we could draft it in a non-leading way. You know, I think the two big issues of tonight have obviously been the moratorium and the ordinance for the transportation sales tax referendum. You know, I think there's some common threads, and I've often been guilty of being unable to stick to one topic because so much of what we do here affects all the issues that we deal with. And so, we face a lot of pressures in this county. We face a lot of pressures in this region, housing, transportation, flooding, and certainly, I have a vision for where I think we need to be headed. That involves, you know, a lot more transportation investment sort of through the spine of 26 and, yeah, some, you know, changes to how we, how we develop in areas that are already developed so that we can preserve the rural areas that I know a lot of folks treasure dearly here and so that we can preserve our sort of ability to stay together as a community. I think that that choice is taken off the table with the way we're framing this referendum, and I think that, you know, it's, it's supported by the efforts of this moratorium to put in place more permanent solutions that are going to be community-driven. So that's where I stand on both of those, and I think that the more we can give communities and folks the power over their own future, the better. And so, that's why I voted the way I did tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pryor?
Thank you, Mr. Darby, which you stated so eloquently, and I agree with you on the moratorium issue. And you can't be an organization for affordable housing that you're against protecting people that's already in their houses. That's an oxymoron. If you really cared about people and you cared about affordable housing, you would be fighting to keep them where they're at, not fighting for developers to come in and offer them pennies on the dollars and then turn around and remove them from where they're at. As again, I stated, these folks aren't willing to sell, and I'm going to do everything within my power to help them from being forced to sell. That's all they're asking us, help us so we won't be forced to sell. When big developers come in, you know, they come in and they take advantage of the whole county, our schools, our roads, you know, our infrastructure, they come in. And so, I said it, I think it was two meetings ago, we need to start looking at, you know, and I know people don't, don't like that, but we need to start looking at having these folks have all these infrastructure in place before they start these big developments and then build up to our standards and turn it over to us. Because I'm paying for something... Because I'm paying for something that some new person come in, and then, you know, I've been paying for 50 years, and somebody comes and they build, and they get to use the same, all they do is just pay a connection fee. That's it. So impact fees is another way to look at some of these things. I'm not saying this council would do that, but we have to look at ways because we can't keep taxing the same people over and over to bring in other people. And so, you know, again, if you for affordable housing and you want, you know, workforce housing, you should be for keeping these people in their homes because that's why we did the home repairs, to keep people in their homes. You know, people are partying us all over because we did that, keeping people in their homes by repairing their homes, putting roofs and floors and windows, whatever they needed. So again, we represent these folks in the unincorporated area. They don't have a voice unless they come through us, and I'm not ashamed to say I'm going to do everything I can to keep them in their, in their homes and keep their land. That's what they want, and if they kind of miss him, Mr. Pryor want to sell, they can sell, but I'm not going to force them to sell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boykin.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I am now. Mr. Cabrowski, imagine if you will, if the Mark Clark started at Calhoun Street, and everything West Ashley, James &amp; John's Island was completed, and the last stretch was going over to Mount Pleasant, how would you feel? You come tell all these folks that I represent that it's okay that are stuck in traffic and have no hope except for transportation infrastructure. I'm one of those ones Mr. Middleton mentioned that ran on finishing that road. I don't understand why we've got to be in fight while we're alone. You know, any other part of the county, it wouldn't be such a struggle. But we're having to try to get our fair share of infrastructure that has been neglected, woefully neglected. And you don't have to talk to all these folks, make my phone melt. So, you know, I don't, I think the shoe were on the other foot, you'd feel entirely different. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Boykin. Mr. Administrator?
Actually, yes, sir. As most of you, I think all of you know, it has not been an easy week here at the county. We lost a person that everyone that I know holds in the highest regard, who is a leader in the community, and he was a leader of the Charleston County family. And would we all just please, again, as Reverend Middleton said, remember his family during this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hamm?
Sorry, thank you. Thank you. I want to say we get to do some things that are, that are, make you feel good sometimes, and we're very blessed to have somebody like Mary Thornley, all the things she did. Think about all the people she helped, all the individuals that got a better job or have a better life, or their children got a chance to go to school and learn a trade. And this council has been really, she was right, this council has done an awful lot just since I've been here and since before I got here. You know, we helped them with the nursing school and lots of other things, and I'm always amazed to hear that's the third-largest university in South Carolina now. But it's quite a feat. She did one heck of a job. We're very lucky that we had an individual like her. She, she just, she gave it all, and she got it all done, and she helped so many people. It makes you feel really good. And sometimes we have some pretty tough council meetings. But you know, I enjoy being up here and being part of that, and we've got a great council. I like working with them. Sometimes we don't agree, but we all, we're all friends, and I appreciate what everybody does. I know everybody's got their own compass that they got to follow, and as we all do. And so I appreciate what everybody does. Appreciate you all. Thank you all. You all have a good evening.